Comment from the other departments. The fire marshal has just a few comments in reference to the type of materials that will be used, and the dimensions, and the fire flow tests that will be part of the contingent upon approval.
Any questions for staff commissioners?
You have a motion? You want to hear some of the only?
Well, it's not a public hearing. We don't have to unless you... Bailey, you feel you want to speak to this?
If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. You're a good citizen.
Well, Mr. Bailey, come up here, please, and give us your name and address.
Get a little recognition.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know. George Bailey, I'm the owner of the Great Lakes Dock Materials in Meskegon, Michigan. Partner in GL&amp;B who made the application. My address is 861 Bradley Avenue in Meskegon, Michigan. And basically, we're relocating a building that we dedicated to GDSU years ago, my lake partner and I. And they're going to build a new facility in Meskegon, so we've agreed to take down the old building of ours that was ours at one time. And we want to resurrect it on our property in Lake Side.
Any questions to Mr. Bailey?
Yes, Mr. Bailey? Just one, and I apologize for missing all of the staff explanation that's made already addressed, but, I mean, the building's been disassembled and the intention is to reassemble it. Does that mean it will have the same or very similar appearance to what it did at its previous location? Or is there going to be a significantly different facade?
No, we... The facade that was on the building was fairly new, and we were able to basically remove it in its entirety. And we will put up the facade again on the building. We weren't able to save the roof, so we'll have to install a new roof on the building, but the facade will remain the same.
And of course, my concern is that's one of the first things we see when they go off the parity.
Sure, absolutely.
That it's an attractive building. I think it's important for first impression.
Point well taken. It will have the same facade.
Yes?
Okay. George, you're moving from farther downtown to your Lake Side site. And is this the basis of your headquarters for your operation, for your marina and aggregate and all your other endeavors?
Yes.
How many employees is that?
We have... Currently, we have 25 employees.
Okay. All staying in Meskegon and paying their income tax to the city of Meskegon?
They have good years, so they'll be good for the city. I really appreciate it.
George is my friend, and a lot of times, you don't get recognition for things that you do. I can just tell you that I had the privilege of every summer celebration to ride on his tugboat as he pulled the barges out to load the fireworks on and paid for his tugboat operator and the fuel and the beer and the Frappuccino pizzas and stayed there late at night to bring it back in. It's a public forum, so I appreciate it. And now that people know the largesse you've given to the city of Meskegon, I thank you.
And I hope we get back to the fireworks soon. Thank you.
Any questions?
I just had a couple of questions on the plan. There's a paved parking area, looks like, on the plan. And then adjacent to that, going up to the existing gravel road, it's not really marked whether that's going to be paved or is that going to remain gravel?
It is.
It is?
It's going to remain gravel.
Okay. And then there's a waterfront setback toward the office area of the building, and it's at one corner. And just the way that dimension is, I just wasn't sure... Maybe I'm looking at the wrong dimension. A couple of things overlap here. I just wanted to be sure that the corner of the shop part was also meeting the waterfront setback.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I keep looking at... That's my son around here.
He's probably...
That's my son, Joe. An engineer, so I keep looking over there.
That's all right. I'm an engineer too. And then the... I'm not sure which way north this is. Kind of the southeast corner of the shop looks like it overlaps an existing gravel road, but then there's some contours there too, so I'm not sure if that road is still there, if that's going to be modified.
That road is not active anymore. They've reconfigured the entryway for the trucks and the area of business. They've reconfigured it. So that's an old dotted line.
Okay. All right. That's all I...
Any other questions, commissioners? No, you're taking a motion? Commissioner Lys?
I have moved that the site plan for a building located at 1920 Lake Shore Drive for GL&amp;B LLC be approved based on the following findings and conditions. If approved, and all requirements listed in item number seven.
They have moved and supported. Is it approved, the request? Are there any further discussion with the commissioners? Same then, go call place.
Smith?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Mohoski?
Yes.
Mosey?
Yes.
Mike Sell?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Pataro?
Yes.
You have these drawings back, George?
Nope.
Next, we have old business, and I'd like to start old business by just mentioning, commissioners, did you all get a copy of the memo that the site plan for SAPI was changed slightly? And did anybody have any questions regarding that? Nope? Okay. Then, I know that there are some people in the audience that wish to speak about SAPI. We're very interested in any new materials that you may want to bring before this planning commission. Try and hold it to new things that we haven't already gone over ourselves. And if you want to come up and speak, just raise your hand. Give me the opportunity to do that.
I'm Brian Torson, live at 3256 Wilcox, Meskegon. And I see a couple of questions about the site plan for the scrapyard approval. My biggest question is, is that is marine-based transportation materials allowable under I-2? Under the I-2 zoning, which obviously encompasses the I-1 as well, there is not a single mention of marine freight transportation anywhere in that zoning. They very specifically, in section 1401, Article 1, discuss railways, discuss trucks, especially uses of those, of the terminals for that. But no mention is made of marine transportation in either one of those zoning descriptions. Marine freight is very specifically discussed in the waterfront industrial zone, waterfront industrial PUD. Section 1504, Article 1, talks about water transportation of freight. Article 3 talks about marine cargo handling, loading, and unloading facilities. Article 5 discusses any use with outside storage of bulk materials to be shipped by commercial watercraft vessels or barges. Article 7 discusses bulk and warehouse storage of goods shipped by commercial maritime vessels. Trying to understand how these are so specifically laid out in the waterfront industrial PUD but not mentioned at all in I-1 or I-2. Maybe it was just an oversight. Seems like a pretty big oversight. The waterfront industrial PUD also lists as an accessory use docks, wharves, piers, transit sheds, or related facilities used in connection with the transfer, handling, storage, and transit, and processes of cargo from or to waterborne craft. Once again, very specifically laid out in WI, not a mention of it in the I-1 or I-2. And these docks obviously sound exactly like what's being proposed to be built and what was on the site plan, and that was approved. There was docks, piles, piers that were approved on that, yet they are not mentioned in I-1 or I-2. And it sounds like the planners, the commissioners in the past have probably given this waterfront industrial thing quite a bit of thought because one of its prohibited uses, section 1505, Article 6, salvage yards, ship scrapping, dismantling, and wrecking operations not wholly contained in buildings are prohibited to be on the same site as all these permissible waterfront activities.
What number was that again?
1505, Article 6. And that is in the waterfront industrial PUD description. There's just been a lot made of the fact that a scrapyard is allowable under the current I-2 zoning. Seems like this has been the foundation of the new owner and his very unneighborly lawyers this whole time. They bought the property as I-2 so they can continue with I-2 uses. They say they're entitled to the rights of these I-2 uses based on the zoning ordinance, but it seems they're going to go by the letter of the zoning ordinance. They need to use the entire zoning ordinance, not just what they choose to pick out of The ordinance very clearly states, or sorry, does not state that marine transportation of freight is allowed under I-2. And it seems like a pretty major, major thing to just being allowable use, just to be an accessory to what they're doing. Especially the fact that it is so clearly laid out in other zoning areas. You know, unfortunately, the master plan that was created by the planners has been kind of disregarded, disrespected, and is being thrown away by these guys. But it does seem like that same tactic can come into play when it comes to the zoning ordinance. It's the law. It's written down there, and I think it needs to be treated as such. You know, the new owner's putting very strong resistance to the city's request to rezone the property. He knows that City Hall's not super excited about a scrapyard down there. Yet, every plan he's brought up somehow relates to the waterfront and the barges and freighters and everything that's connecting the lake to his property. And under I-1 or I-2...
We could have trouble in there before things are sorted out with the DEQ. So, that's all I'm here to say. I just want to say that Montague Parsons Hop deserves a clean world to grow up in and a clean neighborhood to grow up in. And we need to be neighbors and work together and find creative solutions to this. So, I hope we can.
Thank you. Next?
I just have a point of clarification. How would you like us to get this information to you?
I actually... Give me your name and address, please.
Pardon me?
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry. Cynthia Price, 1357 West Southern, Meskegon, Michigan, 49441. I have a couple copies of the references that Brian made. However, I do believe that they're misnumbered on the copy that I have, and they aren't as accurate as, I mean, you know, they don't really section. They are a little... So, would you like us to email you the references? And if so, to whom?
I think it'd be best just give them the planning. Turn them in at the planning office, and they won't give SAPIs. We all have the ordinance book.
Well, right, yeah. And so, we probably don't even need to put it out, just give references.
Actually, if you just sent something in and pointed out the parts that you want us to concentrate on, that would be sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? Commissioner?
I just have a couple of questions. I have copies that were the same copies that these folks are working on. And I guess Mr. Torson is reading off for why PUD waterfront industrial planned unit developed? Would that differ from a waterfront marine zoning?
Yes, it's a different zone.
So, it wouldn't... It's not necessarily applicable. Because it's not a PUD.
Well, it is essentially a PUD.
Okay. So then, this, what he gave me is relevant?
That's not the current zoning, but...
Oh.
Commissioner, I believe it would be relevant if Melching agreed to a PUD for the site, which he has refused so far to do.
I know, but what they're trying to make a point is, is that, you know, if the scrapyard doesn't imply that they can ship and use barges and whatever, as we referenced in here, then I guess my only question is, till he gets a copy of it, he won't really know what they're referring to. So, we don't really know at this point, you know, what Mr. Torson said is in fact.
It is currently a type of zoning district. It is in the zoning ordinance, so...
So, some of what he's... So, off, just off the top of your head, some of what he said is relevant or not?
From what I've heard from the... From him saying for the waterfront PUD, I think there's some relevance to it. I think there was some misinformation on the I-2 zones and what type of transportation is allowed.
Well, then I just... I'll be done. One more question, Larry. We were given a copy of a... Well, what would we call it? The site plan, enhanced site plan that we didn't have before. All of the planning commission members got it, and since it was under two acres, planning and I sent the city manager and gave approval to it because it was under two acres. Is that... Because I'm asking, is that a normal situation or was it an inconvenience? Or was there some reason that couldn't come to this body?
Well, it certainly could come to this body. It's not required to an environment that's not...
It's not required to, then that's...
It's under a certain acreage amount. It is under staff review and doesn't come to the planning. The zoning administrator can make a request to, or can take it to the planning commission. This, in this case, it wasn't anything out of the ordinary, but we determined that we wanted to ensure that the planning commission was advised about this so that you were aware.
Okay. Now, the two docks that go in there, they call them platforms or whatever, would have to have approval from other bodies other than us, right?
Yes. There's a request to the DEQ, which is under review, to place those platforms at that location. And they are... There's a public hearing scheduled for October 1st.
Thank you very much.
I was just going to say, I would suggest, particularly since this particular item was not on the agenda, that instead of asking the staff to respond to questions or statements made, that they be allowed to provide us...
I tried to make that point here at the beginning, that we're not going to respond, and we shouldn't be asking questions of the staff. We're taking information in, and we're going to get a report back on it.
Let me say something on behalf of the staff. If we can answer the question, we'll answer the question. Not an inconvenience or anybody else.
Well, but some of those things, I know there's some legal opinions. We don't have the corporate counsel here. I mean, there are documents that can be distributed to everybody, and the city commission should be informed as well of those types of issues. I disagree with you.
There has been no meeting of this group that they talked about in the paper with the DEQ and the city staff and Mr. Melching.
No, there hasn't. The meeting has not...
Is there one scheduled?
A public hearing?
No. There was been mentioned in the paper, and there was mentioned several times that DEQ wanted to put together a group, including Mr. Melching, people from the city, et cetera, to discuss this.
To discuss...
The SAPI site?
The SAPI site, yes. There's been, it was included that he...
Can the planning commission get some kind of report on how those meetings are going, you know, what's being discussed? If there's anything that...
I think, I'd be happy to make sure that happens when I think there's something more active. And, you know, the desire has been to try to put together a meeting where there's a public presentation so that it's not just the commission, it's the planning commission and others, but that it's a public session.
One more question. What is the October 1 of here? He just says...
It's going to be here.
The one here that's... Okay. Giving those...
Yeah. One, I can tell you what I know. I just received a notice today. What I understand is that the... The information I've received is that October 1st, from 6:00 to 7:00, there'll be a question and answer session with the DEQ. So, hearing help, I think, which was the city's meeting, so the DEQ. And from 6:00 to 7:00, question and answer session, and then the public hearing on the request from Melching for the platform is going to be held at 7:00.
Okay. I'll be in the audience. Get that down on your calendar. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak to us? Yes, sir.
Jim Riddoso, 36, 39, Marina View Point, which is Harbor Town. When we're talking about, there's been meetings with the neighborhood groups, from what I understand, and Harbor Town is a pretty good-sized tax base along with the two marinas that are there. And we would certainly like to see Harbor Town as an association invited to these meetings because what happens on that property will have an impact on the value of our homes in Harbor Town. So, I'd just like to have, if you need the information of where to send it, I'll be more than happy. But we'd like to be part of those discussions. Thank you.
Mr. Riddoso, why don't you just leave your address with the court? Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Karen Bennerick. I live at 3302 Arlington Avenue, Meskegon, Michigan, Michigan, 49441. And I regret that I was unable to go to the last meeting of the planning commission because the one that I went to for the meeting prior, Melching and his, I think it was his visionary came and presented and asked for your approval on the site plan. And at that time, every single person gave great oratory in terms of how he had kind of bait and switched from what's saying that he was going to have just a temporary junkyard to having a scrap operation that was planned all along. And every single person, I was just so thrilled. I think I went around and shook everybody's hand because I was so happy that I didn't have to complain because everybody seemed to be on the same wavelength that this is such an important decision. We can't take it lightly. We have to have a thoughtful response every step of the way in order to make this hundred-year decision a good one for us and for our grandchildren. And then I was in the U.P., and all of a sudden, I read it was approved, and I'm like just dumbstruck. And I don't know if I can ask questions of the people who were there, and I regret that I wasn't able to be there, but if anybody could enlighten me as to what the rush was to approve the site plan at that time, it seemed like a more measured, thoughtful response would be to wait until the public hearing to gather all the information like you're asking to do now. And then I also wondered if, you said you got a new site plan was submitted, does that revoke the original decision that was made at the planning session that I wasn't able to attend?
I can say, you know, the last question you asked because it was just an amendment to the plan. It wasn't a new plan. It was just a small amendment to it.
Just want to understand, and Harbor Town is a pretty good-sized tax base along with the two marinas that are there, and we would certainly like to see Harbor Town as an association invited to these meetings because what happens on that property will have an impact on the value of our homes in Harbor Town. So, I'd just like to have, if you need the information of where to send it, I'll be more than happy. But we'd like to be part of those discussions. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Riddoso, why don't you just leave your address with the court? Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Karen Bennerick. I live at 3302 Arlington Avenue, Meskegon, Michigan, Michigan, 49441. And I regret that I was unable to go to the last meeting of the planning commission because the one that I went to for the meeting prior, Melching and his, I think it was his visionary came and presented and asked for your approval on the site plan. And at that time, every single person gave great oratory in terms of how he had kind of bait and switched from what's saying that he was going to have just a temporary junkyard to having a scrap operation that was planned all along. And every single person, I was just so thrilled. I think I went around and shook everybody's hand because I was so happy that I didn't have to complain because everybody seemed to be on the same wavelength that this is such an important decision. We can't take it lightly. We have to have a thoughtful response every step of the way in order to make this hundred-year decision a good one for us and for our grandchildren. And then I was in the U.P., and all of a sudden, I read it was approved, and I'm like just dumbstruck. And I don't know if I can ask questions of the people who were there, and I regret that I wasn't able to be there, but if anybody could enlighten me as to what the rush was to approve the site plan at that time, it seemed like a more measured, thoughtful response would be to wait until the public hearing to gather all the information like you're asking to do now. And then I also wondered if, you said you got a new site plan was submitted, does that revoke the original decision that was made at the planning session that I wasn't able to attend?
I can say, you know, the last question you asked because it was just an amendment to the plan. It wasn't a new plan. It was just a small amendment to it.
Can I ask what the amendment was?
The amendment was to allow a welding steel fabrication of, I don't have in front of me what the language was, but tanks to be assembled on-site.
Essentially...
It's like a boat building?
Essentially, two platforms and a operation that would be able to allow them to assemble or disassemble at the point of, in the...
Assemble the boat?
Steel storage tanks.
Steel storage. But could somebody enlighten me what happened between the meeting that everybody was in agreement that it wasn't a good idea to go forward and the meeting where it was approved? I mean, that was the one big question mark that I had in my head and kind of...
Well, I can't speak for others, but we did have our city attorney present, and he couldn't come up with any legal reason that we had not move forward. Was pretty much the opinion of the case.
Because I had heard the whole trucking and the difference in the Lake Shore Drive in terms of the bike lane and different things going through there, that when they reconfigured the street, that that might have been a reason to deny it because of increased traffic. And was that brought up or considered?
It was discussed. I'm sure it was a four-to-two vote, so you could ask one of the four how they saw it. You could ask one of the two how we saw it. And I'm sure the four thought, in the best interest of the city and from a financial standpoint and a legal standpoint, they believed that they had no... they believed that they had no option other than to approve it. And there were two of us that voted the other way, that thought there was a bigger picture involved and, and they voted against it. So, I, I, that's a synopsis as quick as the least words I can say.
You can read the planning commission minutes from the last meeting on the city's website. They should be up tomorrow. And that'll... So, that would clarify it. Because, you know, maybe I'm just totally ignorant in terms of what the purpose of the planning commission is, but... I would think it would be to uphold the zoning ordinances that are in the city and then the master plan, which we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to create. And that you would want a consistent kind of response to looking at a long-term vision that would reflect that. But just, I'm just wondering what the inconsistencies mean. And as a concerned citizen, I just am looking for answers.
I would just add that I asked a very specific question before we voted of our attorney. And I asked him if it made any difference whether we voted this up or down in regard to what Mr. Melching was currently doing and what he'd allow to be doing in the future. And the answer was no.
I guess I just have a hard time envisioning this because I know that if your grass is, you know, like eight inches high, you can get socked with a hundred-dollar mowing fee as a private residence. But, you know, if somebody's doing something that isn't part of the ordinance, zoning, you know, consistent with the zoning ordinances or...
So far, it is. Under the current zoning, he's doing nothing that is outside the zoning that he's allowed to do.
I guess I was more enlightened by what Ryan spoke to in terms of defining what's actually in the zoning ordinances and what isn't in there.
So, in, in a zoning case, just because something isn't mentioned, doesn't mean it can't occur legally occurred there.
Okay, well, I guess I'll read this and hopefully be better informed. Thank you.
Sorry, can I give you better response?
Then wait.
No.
Anyone else wish to speak to this item?
I don't know that I can give anything.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm King Nelson. I live at 2218 Harrison, right up from you. And I want you to protect our lake. That's the main thing, is our lake. It's your lake, it's my lake. It goes into Lake Michigan. It's everybody's drinking water. And it's how one man can come in and bully a commission is beyond me. Now, one man can just oversee everybody and he's going to do what he's going to do. I don't understand. I've lived where I lived for 48 years. My husband worked at the Milford Court. They were good neighbors. And it really breaks my heart just thinking of this darling. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Melching, I am bullied by him. He's got a legal right to come to us with proposals and if they fit within the zoning, it's our obligation to approve them if we cannot find a reason not to. And so far, we haven't been able to come up with a reason not to. But he has not bullied his way into anything that he's done as far as I'm concerned. Any more?
Two more seconds. Make it quick. Be fast. Sure, run. Just two things. One, the reason I brought up the WI PUD, I realized that that's not the zoning that was there. My point was, why was it so specifically discussed in one zoning category district but just overlooked in the other one? Do you think that it, it doesn't seem like an accessory use? So, I have three things. Two, you mentioned, Mr. Francis, that I had some misinformation in my I-2 transportation. If I contact you tomorrow, can you itemize what that was for me? You can do that? And, and three, we have a business with 20 acres of waterfront marine zoning. And we've always ran our business by that zoning guide is what we're allowed to do and not do. So, that I just hear that that's actually not accurate. There's things that aren't on that that I can also do as well? Potentially just throw things out there? I mean, we've always gone by the book. I thought that's what it was, that's what the law was.
Well, the point I was trying to make is, just because it doesn't include water transportation in the ordinance doesn't automatically mean that that's prohibited.
Right. I understand. It just seems that it's a pretty major omissions. Thank you.
We'll certainly look at that and we'll, we'll take your questions and try and get some clarification on, on those. Don't give up. Anybody else?
I'd like to just have one more sentence.
All right.
That is...
Last one.
Okay. Can I just do it from here? It's just one sentence.
Yes.
Okay. What I read the ordinance and, and what I understand legally about the ordinance is if it says it shall, that means it shall. If it may, that means other things can happen. But if it, in the ordinance of I-1 and I-2, at the, I-1 and I-2, right at the beginning, it says they shall. The, you know, it shall be this. The use is shall be this, not maybe this, shall be. So, I think that's the difference and I think that's what you have to look at.
Thank you all for coming tonight and expressing your opinion. It's always good to see citizens here who are willing to speak up for issues concerning them. All right. Okay, we're going to take a minute break because we've got something else. And if you don't want to stay for our form-based coding informational session, you can leave now. So, we'll have to distribute this later and then we're going to move on to the next item.
What is form-based coding?
That's what the discussion is going to be about.
You don't know yet, right?
Oh, but I know. I've researched on this and this is recorded by the staff. And that was in the first class. I'm interested in this.
I don't know what it is, so I guess I'll find out.
Please take your conversations outside. Somebody can finish your...
Planning commissioners, what you may think that we can use updating? We have put up our zoning ordinance updates for quite some time, but we think that's probably going to be a pretty costly measure. We could probably buy without that for now. We don't feel it's necessary to do a total update of the master plan, which is the 1997 plan. But maybe, you know, as soon as five, eight years down the line, it'll probably be more pertinent to look at that then. But what we could do is...
For that specific area as a potential test or whatever.
Yeah, that would be, that's, that's what we're looking for. That is an option. Anything else?
Well, I, I mean, there was quite a lot of material here to go through. And quite honestly, I was pleased to see that a lot of it is pretty compatible with our existing B3 zone. Some of the things that were brought up in the, the, I guess, informational session that we had earlier this year are not addressing our current ordinance. Like, you're requiring a minimum level of glass frontage at the street level. That, and I mean, there's some things that we could do to tweak the existing ordinance without starting from scratch to accommodate some things. That was one item. Another item was things like required clear glass at street level to improve that sense of safety that we could have when you have occupied buildings and people on the sidewalk. And the other issue had to do with parking. And I think there are some things like that that we could, if we're willing to perhaps take some minor, minor modifications while we perhaps are looking at a detailed zone change or rewrite the B3 zone that we might be able to do. I know one of the issues with parking that I've never quite understood is why all our parking spaces are designed for a Chevy Suburban when there are very few Chevy Suburbans on the road. And yet, because we specifically mark our on-street parking at 18-foot lengths, we fit in probably two-thirds as many cars as we could based on standard cars. And if we just eliminated the actual separate parking space markings and just marked an area for parking, we could probably have a significant increase in our parking, which would give us more flexibility when we're dealing with downtown building site plans where off-street parking is limited. So, I think there are some things like that we ought to have some discussion on and that perhaps sooner rather than later, we could take some action on it. Because these are some of the things, like off-street parking requirements or having to have a shared parking agreement, that become impediments to some of the developers who are trying to find ways to put together the financial package as necessary to build new buildings now, how, or to redevelop existing buildings.
Did it?
So far, it was...
I mean, just, everybody did read it.
Well, I, you know, parking is like an enigma. If you don't have it, you're in trouble. If you have too much, you've wasted space. So, it's, it's always a battle. And if our goal is through, like John Rook's development, where we get market rate apartments, obviously, those folks, I don't think use cars as much as folks that do and that are in suburbia or suburbs. So, you know, maybe our goal, as Larry said, to get the spaces down a little bit and maybe not the requirement we're at under B3 so we can be a little more flexible to, you know, lessen the amount of parking lots that, you know, don't do much for anybody. I mean, unless you don't have so, you know, there's always that. And I, and I agree with what you said. So, I would offer that. Flexibility in B is the key. Because if all projects aren't the same, they never will.
Anyone else wish to say anything?
Sounds like for the next meeting, maybe we all need to review B3 again.
That's a, that's a good goal. Because it allows for, it's a lot like construction, but it's a requirement. I mean, there's some things like that that could be tweaked to bring it more in line with the form-based codes that wouldn't be a neutral.
As far as I understand it, the, the form-based code is more, as far as parking goes, it's more market-driven. But, you know, the developer comes in and puts in an investment, they are going to, rather than be required to have X number of places, they're going to say, okay, what's my customer base going to need for a good type of service and, and my market? So, they'll provide parking places without us having held them. They need 15 spaces for every repeat.
May I address something?
Yes, you may. You may ask.
Was it, and perhaps my, was, was this, I think this could come up at one of the presentations I missed, was your presentation on the form base. And something you found most interesting was the comment that you want to help drive for downtown redevelopment to create parking overlay.
Yeah. That was true.
There, okay.
Right.
Can someone help me out with my ignorance with parking overlay?
Parking overlay is like, if you have a building and you...
Yeah, that does make the number of parking lots go around.
Our downtown, my, my, you have to tell now. Our downtown has what we call a parking overlay zone, which allows businesses to have a certain amount, take 30% of the parking, don't require parking in the town street. So, you can tell 30% of the requirement has the off-street.
On street, just longer frontage or anywhere.
Wherever there's a parking.
Could you speak out of my diner?
I was just asking if it was just the parking right in front of their property or if it was anywhere downtown or on that particular street or block or...
Since they're in the overlay district, we just count it as 30% anywhere.
But that still requires you have a certain amount of off-street parking.
I mean, we could even amend, you know, in the downtown overlay district, you aren't required any spaces.
Right.
That's something you could do without the form-based code.
Right. And that suggests we do some of those kind of tweaks as an intermediate step. Because we have folks who are putting plans forward now.
Anything else on form-based code?
Just one thing on another. It's a little bit out of the planning period, but I'll feel better if I say it. 1979, when I ran for city commission, the biggest complaint was the city inspectors. When I ran for city commission in 2002, the biggest complaint I had was the city's inspection department. And I give you all the credit in the world for being forward-thinking and going with a private firm to do the inspection. It's the biggest cloud that hangs over this city. So, if it works for you, it's going to work for me. Give me all the credit in the world. There, so...
We, we all hope you're feeling better.
Compared to what?
Anything else? I just, I wanted you to go to get the, your wife.